Good evening, Mayor Protemp and Council. Mayor Ivaldo Roca, Mayor Zandra Negrete, Alderman Joe Inarza Jr., Alderman Frank Rodriguez, Mayor Protemp Rachel Munoz, and Alderwoman Plays Ford Francisca Chieira Magis, and Alderman Andres Rodriguez. Mayor Protemp Rachel Munoz, this morning I was notified by Ms. Negrete that she would not be attending the meeting this evening. She does have family emergency that she has to tend to this evening and the rest of the week. Mayor Protemp, you do have a call. Would everyone please rise for the third of eight just?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual who can be or be against this law.
We'll move on to another report which is Citizens Communications and Recognitions, Mr. Juan Martinez.
Good afternoon, people. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's get something closer to me, so everybody here is going to understand. My name is Juan Martinez. I recruit with the Friends of the Library as Chair, as well as with the Service Commission and the Historical Heritage Program, which is part of the Partners for Progress. Partners for Progress. And today, basically, we're covering what was not covered, the last meeting, and what's kind of put off in the back burner by virtue of other things going on, and y'all needed some time to look at the prospects here to make sure that we're all on the same page with getting the contract initially lit, so we can pursue forward to following through our process. Now, we've continued on the Heritage Program going forward and gathering information and data from the city and the archives, as well as historical project features and pictures to put together our book. And there are other people, as you probably already know, there's a few over eighty-five classes or people that are also participating in this on a volunteer basis. So, there is no money, but there's a lot of good time, and for good reason. So, I don't want to go into a whole lot of features of this unless y'all have something you want to ask me. I think I'd rather cover it that way than sit here and try to spout a lot of English. Okay, how about you? Can you make this in Spanish? That would be good. But seriously, I take this very serious. It's a good program. I sent in that last meeting because I felt that it needed to be pushed through. Otherwise, we're gonna have to wait another year. Not that we're not gonna continue pressing forward, but it sure would save a lot of years worth of time. And that's why I got to say about that. So, if you all have any questions on what we have presented to you, I'd like to hear them.
Mr. Martinez, are you gonna unpack the application process itself?
I'm gonna present the application process. It was mentioned to you and also brought in heart, okay? The application process is something that's required by Texas statute and what they write in the pamphlet, which is a thirty-two-page application, as I understand. The only real things that change in there are the names on the sample ballot that they put in here for the contract. That's intended contract. It's not one that places value on dollars and cents or who you're gonna pay for it. It's just a matter of having something in place that the state can see for the Main Street project, so we can be accepted. As far as the details, that's really up to y'all. As far as what you want to decide, who you want to appoint, I mean ultimately, you can change the whole thing. We're not out here to do that, okay? We are out here to clean up Brackettville and make it a better place and eat money back in the day. So, that's what it's all about. The sample ballot carries the contract, and if you compare the two, and you can see the only minor things that need change are the names, the mayor's signatures, the city manager, and anybody else involved in that program.
My name is Alonzo.
Mr. Ian?
Yes, sir.
You said you're both with the Historic Commission and with the P for P or Partners?
No. Well, we're with the Heritage Group, which is part of the overhaul branches, I believe, and we're one of them. So, we collect historical data and that to present back to the Partners for Progress, so that we can formulate an idea and get some basis for what this town needs. There are, all the things I got in there are twenty-five I selected, the last group. That's gonna be the final group, just for the city. It's not coming to port or any other places around Nevada that are also historical periods. So, my focus is on the city, period. Okay, and I don't live in the city, but I interchange the city because I come out here to do volunteer work and we do the things we can for the city and for the people. So, I also represent the county, meaning whatever we do for the city, we do for the whole county. It's not for anything that lies outside of there. Grangeers, you may, we just gotta get more work out. But that's all it is, so.
My question is, did you have anything to do with the sample budget that we kept, that we carried on those?
No, that is, that budget happens to be one that's documented and used as a sample or a model. You can change that out any which way you want. They would like to see breakout figures of all that. It can be less, it can be more. Depends on the city. Depends on what funding we make, that is, the Partners for Project overall to bring in to make a budget. You can suggest a budget.
What is this sample budget based on? Is it based on other participating cities in a similar situation with Brackettville?
Well, first of all, Joe, addressing that is a good question. There's nothing like Brackettville in a lot of ways. We are, but yes, to answer your question, it is modeled as another township or another area that runs a Main Street project and submitted to the same ability to run a project like this and make it work and make it feasible for the citizens as well as the county. So, it's an overall thing that encompasses everybody, and eventually in time, everybody will come up and say, hey, this is really not a bad thing, but we just have to, we have to work at it. And one of the things is creating a budget like this, you know, this is kind of high. It's a good consideration. We have a city manager that makes, and I'm just guessing, fifty thousand a year. But maybe the Main Street manager would probably make, you know, maybe somewhere around forty, forty-five with all the little venues, maybe?
Well, according to this, it's forty-six, so it's within hundreds, maybe a couple of thousand dollars. This is a projected budget.
Right.
That I see it. So, it's gotta be based on on figures that are used in similarly situated cities such as ours with the same amount of population and what have you.
Right, that is correct. We don't have any small out there. So, if you base it on that level, on a scale, then you're looking at probably something lower on a scale for populace and what the city can afford according to what it makes on grants and other project monies.
Okay, let me add some clarification, okay?
Sure.
Protocol here. We were on Citizens Communications, and you're making a presentation for item number six, Mayor Protemp, is that correct? I need to know where we are.
This is Citizens Communication, Citizens Communications.
We're still on Citizens Communications?
Yes, and there is several that would like to speak, so, yes.
I'll hold off any further discussion until we get to the actual item.
Okay, very good. Is there some reason that I may ask?
Well, during the Citizens' comments portion of the meeting, the council is really not at liberty to discuss the matters.
Okay.
That's why I asked a question to Mayor Protemp. As we're on item number six, we're at liberty to discuss. Otherwise, I'm gonna be quiet.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Any other questions?
Alonzo Martinez.
He put me down. I will elaborate a little bit after the debate, please, Mike. Mr. Garza, that is, a population of fifty thousand or less is what that budget, and that was the sample budget that was submitted to the, for the submission, for the submission. So, that's just based on cities under fifty thousand populations. There's two, there's two scales, urban and the population of fifty thousand, so that's just a sample.
Okay, the reason I would ask is because I'm looking at two physical components here. I'm looking at a projected budget, and then I'm looking at the breakdown in the population wise, less than five thousand. Is this budget universal? Does it apply to all these categories or does it fit into specific people?
It's a suggestive budget, and a lot of these things include like personal benefits, which maybe the person will not get personal benefits. Office operations, if you had an office order, that would be the department. The insurance, publications, you have to pay a thousand dollars for the member of this.
So, this budget is applicable to the city of Bracken?
It would be, and also there's a communication from Mr. Brennan that says, and you've got a copy of it, that sort of the concern with the bracket without pay extra money. And he has quoted on here that the Partners for Progress would raise the funds to positions and there would be additional funds to the bracket budget. So, that would be something that the city would.
I thought I was gonna.
So, and another thing that I'm, when we were at the meeting last time, I felt like the city manager said something about just paying a grant, and this isn't a grant. Because I believe you asked, what would the grant be used for? And this is not a grant, this is a certification of a member to be a historic city. It opens it for other grants and funding, which can be able to drop in five or, but this isn't a grant. It's just a recognition of the historic city.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
I'm on there because of stop sign again.
You're throwing all the women underneath the bus.
Thank you, Sue. Pass down.
I actually put myself on the list. Thank you, Mayor Protemp and Council. I just wanted to talk briefly again about experiences that I have seen in smaller towns in the hill country that were part of the Main Street program and their historic districts. And, you know, it has a positive economic impact for them. It does take time to build, but I am also a member of Friends of the Library. I'm also in the County Historical Commission. In the Historical Commission, we have some members with Seminoles House. We have members also from Fort Clark. We have so much history, and we have such potential with our buildings that are left that have not been totally destroyed. I just felt like there's a lot for us to work with. And we have so much heritage that we are proud of for all of our ancestors that have worked so hard. And I would like, I think that this will help us start that. At the museum, we built more exhibits, we can work with the Seminoles. All of this, where y'all have drawn, Fort Clark, where y'all have drawn people from out of town, who we can trust, kind of the redevelopment downtown, I really do feel like we did a positive economic situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mustin. Communications?
Hey, and the first thing, the first thing that always comes to mind is, I know, I know the city managers involved in this, and I know the area involved. One of my biggest worries is conflict of interest between those two. Because last week, we had given some wrong information, and I think Ms. Martinez clarified that information for us today. I think this is great work. I've been out mine, I've been, I've been. Most of the breakups I've seen downtown gave rise to a lax, and it's just a great thing. The only thing that worries me right now is the conflict of interest in the mayor and the city council. And another thing, at the same time, once we start going this far together, we vote for it, we go forward, I still worry about the rest of the town. We still have a lot of areas in town that are not looking clear. And I don't want the city manager to drop the ball, to continue to drop the ball as far as the rest of Brackettville is concerned. You know, for instance, Frank has asked for a stop sign for probably six months now, you know? We can't even get that done. On the same avenue, this is a great program, and we're gonna support it. We're gonna have to be knee-deep in it, at least for what, five years, right, the program, at least for five years.
At least three to five.
Three to five. The average is five point seven seven, I mean, six years. That's on the average.
It should go faster here.
There's a standard deviation there, not necessarily five point seven seven.
Do you want to be back up here? Yes.
And I have another question with that too, because what Mr. Rodriguez is saying about already the workload and the resources. You said that the names didn't change, so that it technically happened to him, or is that people that we've seen?
That's a very good question. Yes, the whole thing lies around this group right here, you know? You all call them all, right? And we're out here, it's kind of like, Alonzo and I always team. We do things together. I do the mechanicals, she does the handwork. And literally, you know, we pull it off. Y'all, y'all are, well, I'm gonna say you're the mechanicals, because if you get somebody that does a good job to think and act, not react, then you're gonna have yourself a powerful team overall. And we're, Alonzo and I are outsiders. I chose to step up the league here today because we have nothing to gain from this, but I love this town. I've been here before. We make a commitment with this P for P, and it will fly eventually, I'm sure. I could fly today because this is the groundwork for the real work. And see the city come back up because it's in bad shape. Stop signs, good example. I see a lot of brand on one time because it was literally not there except for Lisa Melton. And things like that, simple, but people remember. So, you know, we're setting the foundation here, all of us. We're not gonna, we may see some of it happen, the big stuff, but we're laying the foundations so that this future of this town will be here twenty, thirty years from now. I belong here.
They won't be properly made part of it.
Well, you know, it all takes work. I took a junk heap over here in the fort, and we put a lot of hard work in three years. If I can do that, these people can do it out here. I'm not talking about y'all. I'm talking about the people who take the project by the horn, or by the horn, and go ahead and, you know, make it work. We're out to make it work.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. We'll now move on to a new business, this resolution twenty thirteen oh seven oh seven, a resolution in the City Council of the City of Bracken, Delaware, Texas, authorizing participation in the Texas Main Street program and designating the city manager to coordinate program activities.
I think, yeah. I personally, I'm with the rest of the council here. I do see the good in this program, and I would like to see its whole application, support this program. We have a commitment by Partners for Progress, the people, for Pete, to help fund and help establish the position that's required, the manager for this program. So, I don't see, I don't see negatives with this program. Some of the other things that we said earlier, the other things that us as a council have addressed, and you, for sure, for you as a mayor. We cannot implement a program that is going to slow down our own progress as a city, but that is something that we have to, that we have to tackle. So, as far as I'm concerned, I'm for this program.
Justice?
Well, I have several concerns about this program. The ramifications of financial stability from a Peter's standpoint, I have some very serious concerns. I'm looking at the resolution section number two. It states that the City of Brackenville provide an adequate budget to employ a full-time, eight-year program manager for a minimum, that's, that's not definitive. It says a minimum of three years to provide funds for the quality training of the Main Street program manager and the operating expenses of the program. Okay. I'm also looking at the budget, at the sample budget. The first year of this program costs the city in excess of sixty-nine thousand dollars, sixty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars to be exact. Once we make a commitment, we're in. We can't back down. The second year, we're gonna commit seventy-five roughly, okay? These are projections. That's why I made my question. How accurate is this budget within a couple of hundred, or maybe a couple of thousand dollars? So, the second year, we're looking at seventy-five thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. That's two years. The third year, we're looking at seventy-nine thousand, it escalates. The cost is an escalating cost. It doesn't decrease. Nothing goes down badly. The third year would be seventy-nine thousand six hundred and one dollars. That's a total of two hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars. And then according to the survey that was taken, the average time for a city our size is five point seventy-seven years. That's five, a little over five and three-quarter years, five and three-quarter years here. And three hundred and forty-nine thousand, roughly, three hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred and one, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. Now, if we vote to approve this prospective resolution tonight, we are committing the taxpayers to this money for three, four, five years. And I keep asking, no, no, wait a minute. Let me finish. I keep asking myself, I understand that this is a worthwhile project, and I'm not knocking it, but we do and we must prioritize, we must place our priorities where they belong. I personally would like to prioritize the streets, one thing. We could fix quite a few streets with this amount of money. I don't think, and I haven't told anybody, I've discussed it with a few people, the consensus seems to be that they'd rather see this money spent on streets or on something else, on replacing some of the water pipes, things of that nature. Something that's tangible, something that the citizens can see that the City Council and the City of Brackenville are doing for a citizen. And here again, I'm not knocking this program. It probably will work, but there's no guarantee. And there's no guarantee that this Partners for Progress is gonna foot this bill. What I would submit to the Partners for Project is that we do this at some other time. And I would submit to the Partners for Project, of Progress, that they submit a check or a cashes check in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars as an investment to this program, so the city can be guaranteed not to have to foot this. And I don't expect everybody to agree with me. But my main concern is to protect the interest of the taxpayers. This is not an affluent committee. Our tax base is not that of an affluent committee. We have to be very frugal in how we spend our money. We were told by the city manager a couple of weeks or a month ago that we were operating from paycheck to paycheck where his works. I have some serious concerns about that. I would hate to see the city go bankrupt. And committed to this. This is a commitment, council members. This is a bond bond commitment we're making if it proves. I cannot and will not support this program.
But, Joe, Joe, at the same time, at the same time, if we do support this program and we do provide by downtown, that is gonna bring additional income to the city that we need.
I'm not saying we won't. I'm not saying we won't. I'm not knocking this program. All I'm saying is that I am very leery about committing this kind of money to this kind of program at this time. Maybe in a year or two, we'll be as a city, we'll be in a better financial situation to be able to run a program of this nature. I'm offering by downtown. I'm on board. I've been here all my life, just about, with the exception of two years that I was gone during my professional career.
Well, there's twenty years more to go. Folks, if you want to say something.
Please do. Mr. Martinez, would you please step up to the podium? My understanding, and this is my understanding, is this money is not going to, this is not coming from the City of Brackenville.
Go ahead. We've been in communication with Mr. Brennan and the brothers, the judge here, because they're forwarding on the background, even though one is not in town, but I think he's overseas right now. And he wrote back a letter because even the judge had concerns about this thing not going at all because the proposed changes, this, I don't know if you spell it out, like I see it. This is what I'm reading right here, that there was rumors going around, as they do in middle towns very quickly, that there was proposed changes in the original document, quicks on one page, contract, no. I mean, Mr. Brennan wrote back, and I got that same communicate, and this was on the seventeen. We're still forging ahead, folks, but we're, you know, and it's not discouraging to me because it'll fly. But he said, and I'll quote it, and I'm not sure why he put this part in here. I ruled it out, but I'm gonna quote it anyway. Since Texas is an Etville employment state, which we know of already, and a better solution might be to acknowledge December resolution that the P for P, if it fails to provide funding to cover Main Street expenses for more than one month, and that's any given month, so I'm not gonna tell you it falls below any level. And that is what P for P is actually doing the funding. And the project manager will be terminated and the city participation in the program will stop. So, that's our commitment, and that's all of this, because we're all involved. So, if they stop, we're the we. We shut the water pumps out, that's it, folks. You're not out any money. The taxpayer base is not out any money.
Are you saying, and, excuse me, I move here very well.
It's all right, it's all right.
Are you saying that if we indulge in this program, we endorse this program, we commit to it, we can promote ourselves at any time?
Well, that's written, that's already made a statement. It's already been made here, first of all. Secondly, you have the opportunity to write resolution.
But I'm asking you a direct question.
Okay.
Can we, is the city, will the city be held liable?
No.
What kind of guarantees do we have?
What they've been writing, with that contract that we're looking at right here, and it has nothing to do with us. Put it in writing, put that contract that we're looking at right here, and it has nothing to do with us.
What contract are you talking about?
That contract that you should all go and sign.
I didn't get a copy of that contract.
It should show on there.
Yeah, there's some contract that I'm not getting.
Everyone got a copy of that contract.
I got a copy of the resolution.
Well, the resolution, in my eyes, that's why, when I saw that coming, and that's why I figured you tabled it, that's why you tabled that whole thing. It wasn't just about the money. Money's to be made anywhere you can. This is, this is money that's gonna be guaranteed by virtue of participation.
Well, there's supposed to be a contract in this.
It's called, it's called resolution.
Resolution. It's the resolution?
I got the resolution, I don't have the contract.
Well, there is a contract, if you look at it correctly. To me, it's a contract.
You're saying that this is a contract?
No, contracts, anytime you sign your name, it's a contract. That's, that's a lot of cause of reason, even a handshake, even a handshake is a contract.
This is the resolution, that it may or may not be held.
Well, that's up to y'all, okay? I came here to present an idea, and once I looked past, I agreed with the table in the first place because when I saw that, it started me. I had to go back in, I had to like help you research it, so I could understand better. What, and I say we, because it's my number two, I pay taxes in this town, a lot of taxes. Okay, so this, you know, I don't wanna see money being wasted like this on something that's not got some kind of bona fide effort behind it.
Well, if this is the contract, it's saying that the city will provide funds, will provide funds for a minimum of three years. For training, for manager, operating expenses. And according to this, according to the sample budget, this gives us a pretty good projection of what the cost is gonna be to the city.
Right.
Now, are you also saying that the Partners for Progress is gonna pay this?
We're gonna, we're gonna raise the funds. The Partners for Projects is raising the funding. You know, a big effort here is gonna be with cooperation, not only for city government, but also the people of the city, if he's for the benefit of the bank.
What happened to the Partners for Progress did not raise the funds? I'm just playing the devil's advocate here.
Well, then he gets suspended.
Then the city has to foot the bill.
No, no.
The application, the application should be shut down because the funds aren't there. The funds have been committed for the application.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to put this in perspective for myself, okay? I gotta vote on, I gotta vote for or against it. So, if the funds are not available, the city is not legally committed to this program? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's what it is. It's kind of like having a 501(c)(3) with a nonprofit corporation. You have two different entities working together. Might be under the same name, but if you don't want to get funding for it, you've got nothing. That's what the 501(c)(3) is for, that's why we have one, and we're planning on using it to make money, to raise funds, and give it to the city, via the library. And this is the same thing, no difference, you're like, you're like a nonprofit organization, and P for P is the 501(c)(3). It's the doorway to the capital, so we can get recognized. Here we are.
Alderman made the city responsible for the funding, correct?
No, the city is not responsible for the money. The city is responsible for the people, maybe that they acquire, the city managers, other people who are involved, the things you do on a day-to-day basis. That's all.
My understanding is the city would be responsible as far as honoring whoever's taking care of the money, that's going to distribute, and who's coordinating the program activities.
That's correct.
So, so the city is not making a commitment for this amount of money?
No.
This is an example, that's all it is. You can take that as a.
Example, but it's a projection.
Well, it's a good basis for learning too.
I put the budget in my pocket, I mean, it didn't just get there on itself. I see this as a projection of what may.
And it says, it says that money is coming from a whole bunch of different corporations. And that is one, one industry?
And that's what the P for P is for. We create, we create the committees, the chartering board, and they go out and turn, we hire or acquire a writer that's gonna go out and target these areas. We have the monies to put into this city for whatever it takes, lighting sidewalks, street signs, whoever makes the party, brings the backup, the people who want to come here and spend their money.
I have a question. Excuse me. Ms. Anderson, go ahead.
I am interested in knowing whether or not we can make an amendment to this resolution?
Yes.
To say, because, I mean, like going back to say, what everybody is saying, already the workload that Mr. Garcia has, I don't feel that he should be taking run of city business to take care of this, so in my opinion, I would like to make an amendment that with his, you know, hand initiative help in the city council hire that position.
You can ready, ready with it where you want, you need the boxes.
I understand this, Ms. Anderson. The program manager.
Because right now, it's.
That is in the position, in addition to what we have right now.
Yes, correct.
But that would be paid through the Partners for Progress.
That would be paid through the Partners for Progress.
And so, if they didn't, if they keep short a month, and they didn't raise the money we need for that month, then we, that would Texas, that will.
But that's not what the resolution said. The resolution said the city would provide funds for the management.
Well, the monies are gonna be acquired, they're gonna go in the escrow. Our fund that's created for the city is funded, so they can.
I'm just looking at the semantics here.
Right.
And I'm going by the semantics. It says to provide, the city will provide the funds. To me, that means that the city is responsible for providing the funds. It doesn't say that Partners for Progress will share in the cost or will underwrite the cost. It says the city will provide the funds. It's very specific, very explicit in what it says.
Can, since we've, since my motion would be to pass it with the amendments, can we make the amendment to make sure that we put P for P, will be provided to the government? We can amend it right here, right now, same if we wanted to.
So, are y'all through discussing, so we can move on?
I'm making my motion to pass it with those amendments. One, that the city council hired for that position. And two, with the stipulation that P for P will be the ones providing the funds. And those two, section two and section three need to be.
Are you in a position to commit to Partners for Progress and comply with this motion?
Yes.
Then the city will not commit any funds. And I understand anything correct?
Yes.
No. No taxpayer will be needing money of that nature. We're out here to make money. To make money, we're gonna have to make our own money to make it happen. You will see that.
I understand the concept.
Okay, well, Ms. Martinis, thank you.
Well, we have to have a, we have to have a commitment. To take this, all of these are gonna shake in front of all the way. We not have a commitment as the city council. If this is gonna work, it's gonna be a commitment for all of us, for all of us. We gotta be there, like you said, we gotta be there, we need. We pay both, one thing, one week, and then next week. Do you agree with that?
Okay, so I'm gonna move on to number six. Someone's gotta make a motion. They've got, okay, I hadn't asked for one yet. Okay. So, I'm gonna make a, who's gonna make a motion to this, on this resolution of the City of, City Council, City of Brackville, Texas, authorizing participation in the Texas Main Street program, designing the city manager to coordinate program activities?
I'm gonna make a motion for, with the amendment on section two, that the City of Brackville will provide an adequate budget to be supplied by P for P to play full Main Street program manager for a minimum of three years. The other amendment is on section three, that the city council will hire a, what do you wanna call it? It's not gonna be. The city council will hire a program manager to designate enterprises, main street, then to this.
All in favor?
No, is that gonna be, I'm not gonna go look for somebody to be a program manager, we're gonna take that as P for P to threaten anybody?
That could work.
Yeah, may I reject?
Yes, sir.
The city council, by the very nature of our local government, we're operating, and I'm gonna get into this next month, but we operate under the general law type A form of government. Every person that's hired by the City of Brackville should be approved by the city council. Okay? I'm gonna get into that next month, I'm gonna have that added on the agenda because that needs to be clarified.
Okay.
The city council is the ultimate authority under this form of government.
Ms. Garcia, let's go on to the motion, please.
Is there any more discussion, Ms. Brennan? I would just like to make one final statement.
Okay, did we finish taking a vote?
There's not a second.
Second, I need a second.
Seconded by Mr. Brodege, Frank Brodege.
I would just like to, I would like to say for the record that I don't feel comfortable with this program. One of the financial ramifications that they can tell, that I see, I'm not comfortable with. It may be a good program, it probably is. But under the circumstances, I feel we're not at that point where we can go forward. But if that's my opinion, then I will vote against you. I'll agree with you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. So, all in favor? Motion carries.
That the record reflects that I voted against this.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by Mr. Brodege, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Thank you, everybody. The time is seven, six, 7:45. Six, six forty-five, sorry, correction.